Well, let's begin the playing board meeting. So welcome everyone to tonight.
Oh, nice one.
Oh.
Cheers.
Last but not least, welcome. So we'd like to begin our village playing board meeting tonight. And our first order of business will stand to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and every right to its justice.
Here's your share.
So on our agenda tonight, we have the approval, review and approval of the minutes from the May 23 meeting. And I was not present for that meeting, so I'll ask any of the fellow board members to make the motion. Or if there's any comments or questions on the minutes prior to beginning.
I was here, so I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then our old business is for 60 and 1/2 Solana Street for revised site plan discussion for the proposed Dollar General. And we have received additional information for this proposed tonight. So I guess I will defer to the gentleman here to just reintroduce or introduce themselves to everyone and take us through the general updates and maybe a reintroduction for those that weren't here last time, please.
Be happy to. Thanks all for being here. Good to see some of you didn't meet a couple of you last time. But I am Jim Toth. I'm with Griffiths Engineering. We are the consultant. We work under a developer, and that developer is called Capital Growth Culture. And this is Victor. My name's Jim Toth. This is Victor Mickle. And ultimately, we work for Dollar General. So we're kind of below our developer in this process. So how it works is Dollar General identifies a consultant to work with, and they do a number of them. And there's a site acquisition process where they look at land properly zoned within their demographics of what they're looking for, for, you know, vehicle traffic, trips per day, population centers. And, you know, you'll notice Dollar Generals tend to be closer to one another than some stores. And that's all part of their business plan and how they not only try to take care of those who are driving, but walkable communities, walking distance from population centers, things like that. So we're here tonight. We joined you back in May. We came in with, and again, we come with no agenda tonight either. We brought our, basically our test fit that we had done back in May. And we brought it in and showed a few of you that were present. And we were looking for your input. We weren't trying to shove any down your throat. So we took some feedback from that. Just to recap where we were with that, our original plan, and I'm not going to show if I don't have it right here, I got the newer plan. The original plan had parking on the front, you know, right up against the right-of-way. And the building was set back beyond the setback line. And there are some concerns about, you know, obviously, it is a beautiful town. I love driving in here, seeing how bustling. I live in Oego, New York, and it's very similar vibe, but you got this thing called the canal here, which is pretty cool. But yeah, so we understand that. So we've taken some notes when we were here in May. We looked at the site. We looked at how we can buffer some of the things with landscaping, trying to fit into your little community here, which is, like I said, it's certainly worth taking a look at what we can do. So let me go right to your site plans here. Okay. So I'll show you the existing site to start out. Obviously, you have a zoom here. Let's see. I stole your mouse, so I'm not used to your clicks here. But this is the existing parcel. There we go. Obviously, it's a, you have a paved area, walkway, structure. Obviously, the plan would be to demo this and develop this into the site that we're looking at. Again, this is a commercially zoned property. In retrospect, looking back at it, I can see why people have some concerns because the way this whole little island of commercial property is not necessarily contiguous to a larger commercial area. So, you know, we're cognizant of that. So as we start to look at the site design, Victor, I'll go to the, yep. So originally, we had parking on the front side of the building, up against Solana Street. We take, made some changes. This is a very, the nature of the lot is very restrictive to us, but we were able to push some of the park into the rear of the site. We came up with a corner entry. So I don't know if you guys see in Dollar General, the corner entry. It's, this is Chamfer down at the lower left-hand corner of the building. It's a 10,640 square foot building. Has a little Chamfer opening, makes for kind of a unique look in the store. Parking is right in front of the building. The majority of the parking, more, majority of the users will use those front spaces. I don't know, have anybody been to a Dollar General? Anyone never not found a parking space there? And what I'm getting at is, we've been in many municipalities in upstate New York, and we know that Dollar General has a secret sauce, a secret formula for obviously locating and being successful, but also, they also know their parking requirements. So, and sometimes we went for variances for some of their owners, some parking requirements. Instead of building 75 parking spaces, we have empirical data that shows during peak season, right before Christmas, on the busiest day of the year, that at the max, we're not even going to use 35 parking spaces. So that's kind of their magic number right up in this area. And that may change as you go out to California and other places, but that works very well for us. And obviously, most of the cars, when you go to the Dollar General, they're parking in the front. Employees typically park on the side and into the rear. That's kind of their policy. And the other thing we have to do on this site is turn a 53-foot trailer around. You see the Dollar General trailers on the road, as well as some of the vendors that supply Mountain Dew and Doritos and those types of things. They all need to be able to maneuver without backing up on the right-of-way because that's, that's a traffic violation. It's a safety issue. So all the sites are conducive to that. So when we get to the next stage of design, we'll show you how we're able to turn that vehicle in a simulation. So we brought some simple plans with us to discuss where we are and again, seek more input from, from the board and the community on what they'd like to see. You know, again, we are privately zoned. We fit within all the setback lines of the zoning, zoning district. You know, we're going to go through the full environmental review process at Seeker State, the state of New York. We're going to protect all, you know, all resources as necessary, and we're going to, you know, we're going to have landscaping and everything in place. We're going to provide runoff control for stormwater. So the stormwater that leaves that site right now is not going to increase. We, you know, we're guaranteed, we have to guarantee the state of New York through a speediness permit that our post-construction flow will not exceed our pre-construction flow. And we do that by holding back water, whether it be a swell or a small depression, or in this case, you know, the tight side like this, we might have to do underground storage, which is basically chambers under the pavement or under, under a fill that allows us to make better use of our real estate on the surface instead of putting it upon there. And so what that does, it attenuates the larger storms. It slowly leaches it out back where it was going to go at that pre-existing rate. And it also improves the quality of runoff. Instead of having to just sheet off the parking lot, we collect it, we treat it, some of the sediment drops out. We deal with that and only the cleaner water leaves the site. So we're not even at that point with the design of this yet. But what we did do, we, as you can see, we added some parking along the side. We did some landscaping. And I apologize of this color print. This is kind of where we are with the progress of things. So I'm going to jump right in to see what, to show you what it's going to look like, that what we're proposing from an aesthetic standpoint. Click the right button. So this is the floor plan. I know you can't really read this. Maybe that's a purpose. No, I'm just kidding. You're going to ask me if they're going to have stickers or fruit and vegetables. I think some of these things will tell us, but I can't tell you what they're locked into as far as produce and stuff goes. But it's a typical layout, freezers and refrigeration along the walls. Not much different from the typical Dollar General would be, except for the entrance. Of course, we have bathrooms and, oops. There we go. Bathroom, but the flow, flow out of those bathrooms is no more than a single-family home. It's just some employees and an occasional customer. So what we are connecting to the utility, to the existing utility out in Solana Street for that. We have a dock door for use only. So you see there's a storage area in the back of the store. And where they unload is a double, this double set of doors in the rear. And we'll show you on the site plan how that happens. But the main entrance is through the front, just for security reasons as well, but it meets all code requirements for exits and egress. So this is our corner view. So this would be on the lower, that's pretty zoomed in, isn't it? There we go. Yep. So this is a little taste of some of the landscaping we're going to do. Again, as the rendering, we're going to try to get more feedback on what you guys would like to see, and we will go from there. So this, this is our elongated part of the building, so along the, what property is? That's the east property line. We just got these from our architects at Dollar General because they control the look of the buildings and they, through Capital Growth. So you flip back to the first one? Yeah. So you see, we have the full windows and the awnings over top of it. We think we're going to be extending those to have another set of those along that long side of the building. So a little more aesthetically pleasing instead of just having the bare surface there. And then as we walk around the building, again, a lot of this won't be necessarily visible to everyone, but obviously, this is a big boring side here. And this is facing the west side. And again, we'll, we'll show the landscaping that we have in place. Oh, yeah, I'm looking at it upside down. Yep, there we go. That's the three sides. Again, landscapes. I know you have some recommendations in the code for architectural requirements. Obviously, not, they're not in stone as far as restrictive, but we're trying to work with, with you and the, you know, the local preferences. And this is the backside of the building where the loading dock is. This is where the semis and delivery trucks will ultimately back up to those doors. It's a concrete pad. And that's not a customer or employee entrance necessarily. It's for loading and unloading, and that goes to that back room. So what's different from the last time we came? I think we came in with kind of a, almost like a barn-looking facade. I think the first go at that wasn't well received, and I could appreciate that as well. So this one's a little, a little sleeker, a little more contemporary, but yet tasteful. We don't have the sign, the main sign on a pole. We have it in the landscape area, a little more subdued than a lot of stores. And there, of course, there's signing above the awnings there, which, you know, we're receptive to, but I believe we're going to be able to meet all the signage requirements as far as square footage. But again, tonight, we're here, there's no, we're not asking for approval. We're asking for feedback, recommendations. So when we come back here, hopefully, we move ahead with the full package or redesign stormwater and some of the more detailed elements of the site that we're meeting all your expectations.
Thank you for that. Is there any additional information you'd like us to be aware of as in addition to what you shared last time?
Yeah, I mean, Victor can talk to the typical store hours if you're not aware of those. And some of the things that we'll present when we come back, we'll have a lighting plan. So basically, lighting calculations, they call them. So you have a photometric plan that will show that the light is staying on the property. There's no light pollution spilling over. We'll show that, you know, with empirical foot candle readings around the site. Again, we'll, we'll have progressed our stormwater collection and treatment system, our drainage and our grading. And some of the things that will go along with that is, we talked about store hours. At night, the site lighting gets subdued a half hour after the employees leave the building. It's all a set system that Dollar General uses. So it'll still have some security lighting, lighting around the buildings in case, you know, police officers want to see if anyone was messing around. But as far as the larger banks of light, they will not be on, so.
Yeah, like Jim was saying, you know, we're trying to get feedback from the community and from you guys and see which direction everybody feels about it. This is our first stop to making sure everybody's on the same page before we go any further. And yeah, we're open to.
You were going to attach on the operational hours and the days.
Yeah, their, their hours are typically from seven to 10, which typically change after they open, find out if that extra hour in the morning is needed. Most likely, it will be eight rather than seven to 10.
Is that seven days a week like that, or is it?
Yep, yeah. All days are the same. They will, they'll have two to three employees at all time in the store. The trucks, I think Jim touched on it, the bigger truck comes in the least probably once a week. And then the smaller box truck, box trucks come in a little more frequently in the week and obviously during off-hours.
Is your own delivery door, was that a pit or is it a luglar inside for that delivery? Because the pits make a lot of water.
No, it's a flush, it's a flush concrete pad. Obviously, 2% slope or so away from the building, but it's no dock per se. It's all palletized stuff that comes out of the truck.
In a pit or anything.
Yeah, no.
Maybe a level, but they'll lose.
He backs up here, there's a little ramp.
Yeah, it's all traversable. Yeah, and this is a pretty unique layout. Usually, it's a little more efficient with the paving. Here, they, you know, just because of the elongated lot, we had to do some development to the rear. That helps in a lot of ways. A lot of towns kind of want that for various reasons, but a lot of times, we show them that it's not needed. But here, it's definitely justifiable to have that in the back. And again, Dollar General parking is pretty much a science for them. Like I said, the employees will park in those back spaces typically against the building. And again, those deliveries typically come early morning when, when the shift first starts. I think that's the way they staff up. They have a truck, you know, they're there at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock in the morning to unload it. And that way, the same, the same people are loading the truck are going to be the ones on the floor. So they try to make best use of their time, I think. Yeah, so as far as the driveway opening, it's permitted through a highway occupancy permit, which right now, we're in phase one, basically. We, we know the typical layouts and we know their requirements, but what we'll do is we'll present them to the state and get their input. Typically, it doesn't change too much, but they will look at site distances, traffic data, all the above initially. And then the next stage, we move forward with that, just like we move forward with these plans. We develop that a little more detail, the grading and all the traffic markings and all that. And then the third stage is basically when we have a contractor, they have to have insurance and they pull the permit to work on that highway right-of-way. But we're going to get feedback from them, and you guys will get the feedback as well to what their concerns, if any, are and what their requirements are.
You mentioned the question of walkability. And, you know, this is an anomalous commercial district. It's really, it's primarily residential.
Yeah.
And I don't see what this project is going to do to enhance walkability, even for the residents of the neighborhood, because most of the business is going to come from automobile traffic in and out. Do you have any suggestions for, you know, enhancing pedestrian safety?
So the way a state right-of-way shoulder is designed, and your engineer may, may agree with me or disagree, but it's designed for pedestrians and bicycles to occupy it. If it was obviously a closed access highway, that wouldn't be allowed. But it's typically designed for that. It's not desirable. We all love to have a more walkable community with connected sidewalks and accessibility. But obviously, the site is what you have. We can, if we built a sidewalk, it would go nowhere. It would just go to the, to the shoulder. If there was some way that, once we grade the site, you don't know what we're going to have in front of it, if it's going to be a ditch or what for drainage-wise. Typically, that's a barrier in putting a sidewalk into the store. But we want our customers to come in in a safe manner as well. So on some sites, where we're like, maybe near some apartment complexes or a bigger, you know, pedestrian population, we'll try to make, you know, facilities for that as needed, if that's something we want to talk about or us to entertain, certainly can listen. Typically, we try to make the roads and shoulders large enough to accommodate typical traffic, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's a 30-mile area zone, but it's at the bottom of the hill where people are approaching at 40, 45, maybe even 50, and they're slowing down when they enter the 30-mile round zone.
And that's what happens, that's how the state.
Yeah, they wouldn't let us do a traffic study if we had to.
Yeah, well, that's, that's.
And just not to, that you guys are ignorant to this, but how it works when they set traffic speeds is basically more that's developed. It's slow, it's a traffic calming effect in itself. And obviously, inconvenience for people, say, you know, five other, you know, commercial properties, one, it would, they would reevaluate the speeds that are traveling through there. So they basically say, what is, what are these motors traveling at, what speed? And then they take a percentage of that speed and they establish that as a speed limit. So there's science to that. But they look at all that through their review.
And we do have some issues with walkability and pedestrian safety. I was reading an article recently about the sharp rise in pedestrian deaths in the last five or six years. And it's, it's kind of shocking. And it has a lot to do with the way we design our communities and the way people drive and the size of the vehicles they drive. So, you know, I think this is something that we really should keep in mind.
Hopefully, we'll be, we won't be a negative impact on, you know, on the pedestrian situation. We're going to work with the DOT and obviously with you guys to come up with some.
It's a sense of life, though, you know, and that's a lucky community. You do have a beautiful, vital, vital central business district, but it's also very walkable.
Yeah, that drivable.
That's the point.
The highway goes right through the middle of town, right through the village. So it's kind of challenging.
Slows everybody down.
It's very.
A good thing.
Terrific, though.
Any other one that has questions?
Yeah, I mean, like Donna just said, it is a mainly residential area. The building that's there right now looks like a house. And so I appreciate you trying to make this, no, this version a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, but I'm wondering if something more of like a design like this nature with like the pitched roof.
I tried.
You tried.
I tried.
Or there was another one that I saw. I don't know if you can see it. It looks like one of your stores in Maine, and that looks a lot more like a house.
If you could bring the lobster here, we'll, we'll entertain that.
I really tried. So although with the, with that beauty roof top, they require a bigger structure with more foundation, the building itself becomes more costly. And that was not part of the budget they were willing to extend for this area.
Right.
From Dollar General, how they assess, I guess, the market and whatever.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not, it's not something they build, they want to build in this area. I don't know why.
This, to me, looks still very commercial. It almost looks like self-storage, like from the sides and stuff, you know, with the paneling. And I know you said you might add more windows, but that, to me, looks like a self-storage unit.
So you guys are entertaining an architectural requirement? Is that what it is?
So, so we do have an architectural review board, and this automatically does go to the architectural review board.
But that's a recommendation, not a sort of requirement?
Well, it will be taken seriously. It's got teeth in it, the architectural review board, so.
Is that different from a town that actually has an architectural requirement or a municipality?
We consider it a requirement. That's, they're going to have the say.
So I think somebody said our first meeting, they said, we don't have a requirement, but we have a recommendation. So that's why I was a little bit confused.
It comes back with the, with the recommendation, and that's what, you know, that's what rules the day. Maybe it was said wrong, but it is, it's a village aesthetic and this, and the background of the ARB is, because it's a village, right? It's not like, it's not like town XYZ, and in the middle of the field is going to be this. So it's, so this is going to be subject to the ARB review, and probably it's going to go there first. Sometimes it's, it's small things like, hey, we'll do a site plan, and then it goes to ARB. But I have, I do want to say that, and let me interject, I, the chair isn't here, and our longest-serving member isn't here. They did call me with comments, so I'm, I'm one, I guess I'll take a minute to say some of those. And I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but they did not find this design suitable at all for the reasons that Ms. Spock already stated, basically, and Donna did as well. And they're, they're very concerned, both of them independently, not even discussing with the pedestrian access issue. They don't want to think that this addresses that. The side of the building that's not treated at all architecturally is, is a very much not desired in this, in this neighborhood setting. The.
The long side.
Yeah.
Yeah, we kind of expected, when we got that back from Dollar General, we expected a little more, I think, on that side.
So that's, yeah, that's a, yeah. I'm just the lawyer, but I'm going to say this as best I can. This is their comments, not mine. Foundation plantings were expected. This, this seems to show something.
Yeah.
But we can't tell what, so that needs to be a lot more specific.
Right, and it will for sure as we develop this. The first challenge was trying to, let's see. Yeah, I don't know if this, it's pretty close to the rendering, but we are certainly open to whatever recommendations and where your points or views of interest are coming from. Obviously, the front of the building is a big one. Maybe we could.
I think they were interested in much more robust plantings and the specificity as to what was going to be planted and how large it would be at the inception of it.
See, give a little better.
We'll include all that typically on the landscape plan.
Right, right. So I know, but as, you know, as we move forward, just to, those are things that were very much.
Need to be a little bit.
Yes.
I mean, we're certainly not against, you know, privacy fencing in certain areas and things like that, when we'll, along those privacy fences, you know, we'll put some foundation plantings on both sides.
Just, just general pedestrian access, I thought was missing. I, they would be better to explain that. Maybe the board can weigh in, but, you know, how are you getting from the parking into the building? You know, is there, you know, sidewalk, etc., etc.?
There is concrete sidewalk on the, the whole parking sides of the building.
Where?
This, this hatched area right here. It's a concrete sidewalk, and it's in a little bit. So we have accessible, flush spaces right here in front for those accessibility needs, a full sidewalk around the parking side of the store, as well as this part as well.
I think that then, then there might be a disconnect because I think.
Think they were concerned about the pedestrian off of Solana Street?
No, but I think they thought that this, that what you're telling me a sidewalk was foundation plantings.
Oh, foundation, oh, no, yeah. So this is a typical concrete hatch. I, I can't see that the scale, but it's a mix of little triangles and dots that typically is what they, what you use to show concrete in section anyway.
So I think that was not what they thought. They thought that was going to be like foundation plantings, and then there would be a sidewalk down this side of it?
Yeah, this is pretty typical of any Dollar General store.
I get that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I heard that. I'm just telling you what they said.
Okay.
You know, that's, yeah, that's, so I think they thought that was going to be foundation planting, and then, so then the question arose, well, then where's the pedestrian? So that's foundation planting, pedestrian. Anyone stop me? I, you know, this is just, this is Terry, this is Terry and John, okay?
I mean, if I may interject real quick. I think as we talked about the very side, I know you were expecting maybe possibly more, but I think some of the biggest things that we absolutely consider is, this is one of the first things you're going to see as you enter a village. You know, that's something we have to, you know, cherish as much as, you know, and that's obvious. I mean, leaving town looks nicer, you know, hey, thanks for coming, but as we, we want, you know, probably to be looked a little, a whole lot more welcoming to our community. And, and that's where in lies all the. And, and that's where in lies all the comments about it doesn't quite match. You know, and that's, that's gonna be, I know that's one of Terry's, you know, comments is, is matching as it goes through. Because again, this is the very beginning of the village entering from that.
One day at least.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we've done what's with our kind of local control, and I think we just need to run some things up the ladder to see how, how they will go. Obviously, if you were in, you know, Cooperstown or a place like that where, you know, you know, not that their history is any less important than yours, but I think that gains more. They'd probably go in a situation like that with a little more of a package. But certainly, we can take those comments with us and see what we can provide.
And on the, I mean, similar notes, all your ankles for heating, cooling, your refrigeration, what is your plan? Where do you plan on?
So the only units that go on the roof are our, our TUs just for the, for the air conditioners too.
There's two?
And then everything else is stuffed in in the back.
Okay.
The way I'm seeing this, it slopes down. So again, as you come in, that's one of the first things you see is this roof would just, you know, I, because when I first saw this particular drawing, I thought it was a nice parapitted roof, you know, and that's, you know, because then you can actually, again, you can hide some of that, so it's not, but then it doesn't also match. It's a double-edged sword.
The one thing we, we did point out, you did have a dumpster on this, like, in storage in the rear. And that's a fenced enclosure with a privacy type. So.
Jamie, was there a continuation of John or Terry's comments?
I mean, I think, I, I just want, I think that was, I think that was the gist of it. They, I don't know what this, what the story is on the materials, but I think what Terry was looking at didn't have materials called out, though I see that most recently. And I don't, you know, I think, you know, this will have to go back to them for the question on materials. It's not, it's not a metal building any longer, is that correct? It's, it's got the hardy, hardy plank or?
It's a metal, metal steel building, but it's obviously faced.
That sideways.
It's, it's metal that's faced, or only part of it is faced.
So there's split face block along the base wall, hardy plank.
That's all hardy plank, yes.
But all along the back is metal?
Yes, there's the side.
Yes, okay, they were like, yeah, that, they were not interested in that. In, in that metal is, is not fitting in with the character. Again, a recommend, you know, the, this will go to the, to the ARB and come back. But they'll also listen, look at the notes that were given, and they, and we try to work with the ARB, you know.
Now, you, you represent Tom and DeWitt as well?
I might.
No, but I'm just, you guys had a requirement. Where, where are we with them as far as, you know, architectural requirement there?
It's all gone. I mean, it was approved.
Yeah, I thought it was.
What, the project one?
Yeah, yeah. What were the, what was the architectural background? Was it much different than?
Well, it was in a much different place.
But they also had an architectural review requirement, right?
Yes. Yep.
Want to give a question on the entrance? Is it a flush drive up to, do we have any barrier for someone that missed the break?
Yeah, it's called a curb. I'm just, that's pretty funny, but yeah, so it's, it's a curb sidewalk, so we want to protect the building as well.
Those are pretty small. I mean, we, I've seen, maybe not here, maybe somewhere else that have been in another venue where they, and they're not aesthetically very pretty, but the concrete things with the cover.
So, I mean, I've been in this business too long. I know I look much younger. But, you know, true, that is kind of the standard here for protecting a building is a curb.
Yes.
Sometimes required that some villages, along the accessible side where we have the flush part and there are bollards.
Bollards, the.
Concrete bollards with, with a colored cover over them.
And they'll have a sign.
Yeah, for, for accessibilities and.
That's large.
They're, they're not in, not in the user's way, but they're necessary.
They're not very pretty sometimes, but we're trying to protect the employees or the entrance and so on.
Okay.
And from an engineering perspective, Greg, is there any thoughts that you have from what the material has been able to?
There's some, yeah, I mean, I think, I think the notion connectivity is gonna become something that the board is willing to consider, especially going out to Salinas Street, but also, I forget the road, it's adjacent to the, to the west. That's got sidewalk that comes out to Salinas Street, so we want to make sure at least there's some sort of connectivity there. I do have some concerns relative to grading on the site that they're gonna have to deal with. There's a pretty significant drop off to the east. And so that's gonna need to be kind of something the board may want to take into account because that, that backside may end up looking, or the eastern side of the building may end up looking, probably elevated.
Yeah, you're looking at two dimensions right now. You really can't tell the full impact.
No, I visited the site and the, the site has been nearly clear cut of all the trees. And now they're just laying there on the ground. So that's gonna need to be taken into account as far as visibility and, you know, what the site used to look like.
Does it?
Oh, yeah. Because he's hoping it's gonna go through, huh? Might as well see him.
And we'll get to you in just a moment.
I, I, I think that, you know, from, from variety of architectural and aesthetic standpoints, from landscape architecture and, and architecture itself, I think foundation plantings are important. They're really in line with what we do in the village here. And also the, the nature of the building. I think the metal vertical siding is not something that is typical of what we, we like to see. There are some numerous ways of doing roof lines on these buildings, even of this size. Whether it's a cost factor on their part or not is something the board, the board may want to consider, but it can be done. It can be done very nicely. Maine's a good, a good place to look at. Yarmouth and Cape Cod is another one. It's a really, really interesting building, very similar to this. Same, same corner entry, very nicely broken up. I mean, you know, the four windows are nothing special. You do want to, you know, in my opinion, you do want to see light coming out of the building at night and daylight coming into the building in general. Doesn't mean those windows throughout the whole side of the building have to go down to the ground, but at least it's an ambitious higher.
Entry at evening, it's nice. They keep them high.
Yeah, but it just, it's much more aesthetically pleasing at night when that thing, when that building is open. Other than that, I mean, I think they've got room to deal with things like stormwater, that sort of stuff, although this is quite a change from what's existing there. And we have not gotten, gotten into any, anything significant. We looked at the site, took a quick look at the plans.
So the current owner cut all the trees down here or something?
Yep.
A positive thinker there, I guess. I don't know.
Well, you're thinking.
Because the way we, these projects technically work, you know, the option, the option is based upon approval.
No, I'm not. But you're thinking when I left some of the edges.
Yeah, which, which we would probably desire.
Yeah, well, I'm happy for you.
Left, take a look at.
Well, it may have been part of site plan requirements when it was approved, probably. You know, it's one of those things, it's a commercial building, so it's not gonna be some of these residents. That may have been what the agreement was that was gonna stay, you know.
And I know we've got, I think, some residents of the village side. If you would please come up or a little closer so we can get you on the mic and introduce yourself, your address, and just any comments or questions you may have or concerns. We appreciate that.
My name is Richard Beck. Sixty-two Salinas Street, right next door to a proposed. And I have problems with the theft they have there. I give you all don't shares on how much stealing they have there, how they don't have any security for it. Do we want that in the neighborhood? With people that got, it's a cash business, so that's the best place to steal, you know, rob the place. So we're worried about that. And what it looks like, you know, it's got a, there's a gas well out back. I have a freshwater pond, a spring bed that they're gonna look to run their water into the ground. This is gonna seep down into my pond. And New York State just came in and tiled it off my land, which they don't have a right way to do it, just so, because after they did the bypass, it was a year after that. Run into law that you cannot run storm sewers next to the freshwater pond. So they had to come in and tile it off my land. And what we have there now is two businesses. You know, we got the pizza shop. We're figuring to move it out to the road now, and we're gonna shut him up. He can't come because he's the only man running the show. So I stopped and talked to him. He just said, they're gonna put the building up, but the road down there, not gonna be a seat his building. That's another thing. He says, I'm worried about people. And if you go Google it online, Dollar General, and they'll tell you, they can't even get people to work there. What are we gonna do? We go more of a China, we're gonna have an empty building, and you're fighting up and down on them? And there's a lot of things to look into, a lot. And I got pictures here to show you about the landmarks up there. And they came in there, never put up, I mean, there's a lot of places in this town you can put up parts. So you want one of them to see your house, Dollar General?
I'm getting one.
This is what they get for the land now.
I, I'd have to talk myself, actually.
Yeah, yeah, I drove, I was actually.
This is my place. This is my pond. He said, well, pictures, I got little ones, but they're that big. But that's just children's my place. This is all taken down. I manicured all my yawn. None of this has been manicured. No, no, plastic stuff they put around, you can see where it's all run on. It's all growing in now.
No, I noticed it.
She came in and she sold all them lots, moved the floor, because they took the franchise away.
All of the.
What was the first thing you mentioned, sir? I couldn't really hear you. You said security or safety or something?
Yeah, safety. You get the number one throughout Dollar General.
Let's, let's, let's focus this on the, on the Rees, but is there, sir, I appreciate your, your counsel when you've shared. Is there, and for providing us the photos, which I drove by the site and I saw the clarity to your, to your point with the photos. And, you know, this is important because we want to make sure we're taking into consideration how it affects neighbors.
Right, we got two buildings there now that looks like residential. I guess it doesn't look residential.
Okay. Is there any other comments that you'd like to share on this? I appreciate your discretion also.
There's a lot more I can say.
And, and sir, is there any, if you don't mind introducing yourself and your address and any thoughts or concerns you may have also, please?
Seventy-one Salinas Street.
Your name?
Ray Lovres.
Ray, thank you.
I am, what I, what I feel is that these stores, and it says right in the, they're, they're put up in low income areas, all right? And I don't feel my area is low-income property. I mean, at least my taxes are telling me I'm not a low-income property, you know? And over on the other side of town, they got dollar stores over there. They can't keep them open because they haven't got anybody to work. And I know that for a fact because I own land over there too, all right? Right across from Reese Park.
Okay.
Okay? So, you know, and if you look, Google it, dollar stores, there's like fifty dollar stores in this area. You know, Hastings or Cato, Weed's Bar, Forksmore. There's a dollar store every place you look. Why do we need one? Because you got three of them over there right there. You got one over here.
Thank you. Thank you. And my question I get from some of the research I did on Dollar General, there's a concept called pop shelf. Correct me if I'm wrong with the name of that, that it looks like Dollar General usually goes towards neighborhoods, suburban areas that have an average household that come from forty thousand up to a hundred and twenty thousand. And then pop shelf will focus on a little higher version of that. I don't know. I think they've just opened their one hundred store. Pop shelf with a goal of opening upwards of a thousand stores and also internationally, I think, is the, is the plan too. But what would, what would be the differentiating factor for a pop shelf, which is, is a Dollar General concept, but just maybe has a price point and maybe a different product appeal to, and again, correct me if I'm wrong on anything I'm, I'm sharing.
I don't know exactly the money range. Pop shelf, pop shelf was like a co-partner that they partnered with to kind of do those combo stores. They don't do them in all locations, and out of state, New York is not one of them.
There are a lot more signs that says, put your kitchen, it says family and all those types of things. A lot more decor, I think. From what I read, I, I know more than you, Mark, it's like.
Yeah, so they're gonna have a thousand open right now in twenty twenty-four. This is from the CNN, it's like, well, it is like this today. Of the pop shelf concept. And I just was, you know, to the gentleman's point a moment ago about, you know, Dollar General, when they're, when they're doing a demographic study and, and, and market study, I was understanding where they're gonna locate a store. It's gonna be, you know, their average, average household income, et cetera, et cetera. What is the differentiating factor between the Dollar General and the pop shelf specific to the village of Balden? And how does Dollar General perceive the village? Is it, is it, do they perceive that so, or is that, are you in a position to answer those?
Certainly not, I'm not in a position to answer those, but what I do know.
But it's not, it's not perceived as low income. It is perceived as they, they studied the demographics from all different angles, whether it's income, direction of flow of traffic, which way they think, you know, more areas are more condensed than others. But we give them all the numbers. They provide us with the locations where they think they, they, they fit.
And then from a staffing perspective, because I think the labor issue now only affects retail, but it affects every aspect of, you know, society today from just keeping labor and keeping adequate staff. So are you in a position to address any sort of the short staffing needs or the staffing needs? And how is four Dollar General, or is that, and from Dollar General, how much of an impact have you, is that having on some, I'm not saying every single one, but just.
Well, the, the way Dollar General looks at their stores is that, and also to answer one of the gentleman's questions is that there's a lot of them in the area. They don't think they are bringing traffic in. Nobody from out of a certain town would drive to another Dollar General to go do their grocery shopping. It's like a local neighborhood for the, for the few communities or neighborhoods that are within reach. So it doesn't add traffic, it doesn't bring outside traffic or shoppers or safety, unsafety, employment, the same as a little higher locals. So in, in the town, people are not willing or willing to take extra jobs or whatever may be the case. It just depends on what that area looks like. We have, Dollar General has no say. They see it as how, you know, like I think the example we use is the little cards that you want to, to go for a presentation with your kid at the last minute at night. They're not gonna go drive downtown to another town to go to another store. So it doesn't bring traffic as an attraction like a movie theater or something like that.
As a destination.
Yeah.
As a destination.
Correct, correct.
Not a traffic generator. It's more so, you know, like pictures of tapping into the existing volumes of traffic. Like the example we use is like, when it's nine o'clock at night and your kid tells you he has a school project due tomorrow and he needs a poster board, you're like, where do you go? Are you gonna go drive all the way into town to the mall or to Walmart?
But obviously, this is the purpose of this, to understand what the communities need and not need and how we fit or don't fit to relate the message just the same, how we can or can't do certain things.
Could create more trips within the community though, right? I mean, it's like, you know.
Within, yeah.
It's going to focus traffic on that area. It's not like it's gonna be exactly the same as it is now.
Well, their traffic study produces at peak, I think like thirty vehicles at like five o'clock. Dunkin' Donuts, which can be built there too, can produce maybe a hundred and fifty on off-peak hour.
We have two Dunkin' Donuts.
They produce more traffic than the Dollar General.
In terms of the like employment that the store would bring, are these like minimum wage jobs or, you know, like above minimum wage? Or what would it do for the community in that aspect?
It's always community-based.
They want to get the available labor. They're gonna have to pay for it.
Any other questions, comments in the board, sir, yes?
We're going from, you know, business, sir, now five days a week. Now I'm gonna go seven days a week. I'm gonna have lights shining on my windows in my house, my neighbors across the street, everything. It's not a place for it. There's so many other places in this town that they could put. One is the old Barnes Dairy down there. They send their bacon, and it looks like hell.
And that's a very valid point about the lighting. I, I think. And that's a very valid point about the lighting, and I think they mentioned that there would be a lighting plan that they would have to address that would minimize, mitigate to the extent, I don't know if I'm not speaking out of
No, you're saying
I'm just trying to paraphrase, that that will be a concern that has to be addressed, that has to be, it's not just a, something we look away from, it has to be minimally invasive, if at all.
The same with your drainage concerns, I mean, your town engineer's looking out for your interests, as well as the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, so we have to do all these designs to mitigate any issues that will arise offsite, because it's lightning storm water.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got a little comment, but
I'm sure you do, I appreciate, I appreciate your discretion. So
The only other thing, I just did want to make sure that you take a look at the code, the architectural review, unfortunately, I don't know if you have, it's Article 22 under the zoning code, architectural review, and that'll give you a good idea.
Yeah, we'll pass that along to the appropriate decision makers.
I would say, I would tell you this, it's even more, it's a more robust review than DeWitt has, actually, it's got more teeth in it, just, and just talking about that, that DeWitt plan that was reviewed architecturally, that it really was a totally different review process and area, and it's a town, obviously, it was more rural area, and this is right in the village, so just, because I do happen to be the attorney for both, I would point it out, so, you're welcome.
And, okay, and I think just one last
We have one more comment.
If you don't mind, just, okay, okay. I got one, all right. That's a four lane, they, it's really a two lane road, Salinas Street, but it's four lanes. They come off that hill, you were saying 30 miles an hour, are you kidding?
Coming into the village?
Yeah, and going up, and going up, that is, they could make it a 45 or 50, and that's what you're gonna get, it's horrible, you can't get out of your driveway, and you don't, you know, you think if they're doing 30 coming down the hill, next to you know, you look in the mirror, you're like, they're on your bump, you know, and it's four lanes, it's four lanes of snow in the winter time, most people, they have two lanes of snow, I have four lanes of snow, so I end up with a four foot snowbank in front of my driveway and what's he gonna end up with?
Okay, so just, just the board, you know, the DOT does look at every movement, traffic, basically skips in traffic where, you know, you can merge into if there's no gaps in traffic, that'll be identified, and a lot of times, the development like this will say, okay, it's too restrictive to make a left-hand turn out of there, and they'll come back to us and they'll say, oh, man, that's too bad, and we reevaluate and look at things, so we're anxious to see what the next step of our DOT permit will bring, and again, they're looking out for the state's interests.
I think we've, I appreciate everyone's robust comments and concerns, that's why we have these meetings, and before I move on to the next, we don't have any new business, so before we close the meeting, I believe that you've been given some adequate feedback and response as to what changes to address, what it powers to be at Dollar General, and that given, if there's not any new business, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Like that, before you do, I'd like to say thank you for your input, obviously, we came here in May, we did a bit of homework, still a little more to do, to mitigate some of your concerns, we'll do our best, so again, thank you.
One more comment, please.
Okay, one more. When is, when is close?
This outfit called me, I was first by my land, and I did not do it in my mind.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So I'll make a motion, or if I can have a motion to close the meeting, to adjourn the meeting. Second, all the way. Thank you, everyone, thank you.